Going to start the meeting. Sorry, I'm just, I don't have my agenda. Hold on. Sorry, it's a little crazy in here. Okay. Could we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item is three minutes to consider and act upon of June, for June 14th, 2021, and June 21, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Seconded.
Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Next up, we have item number four. The fire, this is the item we had on our agenda last time that we held over. We have on the line Chief McCarthy and I believe Assistant Chief Eric Caliber to present the item, and I'm going to hand it over to Chief McCarthy.
So it's my understanding that this item is back before the board to include a bond resolution, and I see that Jared is in the conference room. We've covered all of the details at the last meeting, certainly. Caliber and I are here to answer any questions regarding the project specifically, but I would defer to the board if there are any issues other than the bond resolution.
I just want to note that has the Bond Council commented, Jared, that this bond resolution is consistent with past bond resolutions and there's nothing, there's nothing different about it?
Yes, they have. We got a notice from Bond Council saying that this is traditional and typical.
Okay. Thank you, and seeing that and having addressed this before, I'm okay right now. So thank you.
Same. Thank you.
All right. So if there's no further comment or questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Actually, you know what? I didn't actually read the, I didn't ask for the motion. I apologize. So can I get a motion to?
Yeah. Sorry, so moved, so moved. As written.
Thank you. Second, Tom?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief.
All right.
Okay, the next item we have is to hear and consider and act upon compensation for department heads. So we had this discussion a bit in executive session, and according to the town charter, the Board of Selectmen sets the salaries for town officers, and today I am presenting a proposed 2% increase from, for last year's compensation, which you remember, we were very concerned, obviously COVID hit us and we, we didn't, the Board of Finance didn't put contingency money in for us, and so we didn't give any raises to any of the department heads, and I am proposing a 2% for that last year and a 2% for this year for the non-union department heads. And for those who were not here last year or received an increase for another reason, will only receive 2%, as outlined in the backup that I sent. So last year, again, none of their department heads received any raises to their salaries. Is, I'm gonna, so I'm gonna get a motion to approve so we can open this item up for discussion.
So moved, as written.
And I'll second it.
And I'm going to open it up to discussion.
Can you just say out loud, is there a process after we have this discussion and then vote? Does it, does it go in front of other boards? Just can you say out loud the, what, or is it, what happens?
So my understanding, Nancy, because this is new for me too, because I didn't get to do this exercise last year. So yes, it's just, this is just the Board of Selectmen that, that approves these, and then the funding is, well, it goes into effect, but then the funding is transferred by, I believe, the Board of Finance at a later date from the contingency into those funds.
So as you alluded to, we did, as per the agenda item from our last meeting, I believe, we did discuss this, and while we didn't discuss the specifics and no votes were taken, we did discuss this philosophically, and I am supportive for the reasons that you do outline, both here briefly today and also in your written backup. And I agree with much of what you had said and the rationale for, for these raises and increases, and agree that it would be hard to actually put a real number that's, that I think in some ways it belies the work that people did, and there's no amount of money that we could pay to people for the heart and the blood sweat tears that they put into keeping Fairfield safe in this past year. And so as a small acknowledgement, I think this does feel appropriate. I also think philosophically, it is yours as first selectwoman to make these determinations, and for that reason, I am supportive of this today and will, will vote in favor.
I appreciate that, Nancy, and I, you know, I didn't get to, I was talking just first about the salaries and then the additional backup that I provided is on bonuses. So I just want to have a minute to try to, for the public's edification. So obviously, we haven't seen this sort of thing in the public sector. I asked around, this hasn't really happened before, and which I, I, you know, listen, I think things that, you know, what's the old saying, we shouldn't do what we always do. So obviously, this past year was an extraordinary and unprecedented time for our town, for individuals, and the emergency management team. And so I thought it was, you know, I'm talking with my, with my administration about compensating some members of the emergency management team who are not members of a union. So obviously, there's a large list, I know you've both seen, the list of emergency management, and this is not to diminish those, any member. Everyone worked really hard and gave, put in a ton of overtime, but our union employees were compensated with overtime. But our department heads and those of the emergency management team were not compensated. And so for, so I know we, I spoke about this. They worked alongside, you know, I said, sent you backup and all of the different stuff, and I, and I just want to kind of do this for the public's edification. So basically, in 2020, working around the clock for the better part of 2020, the individuals that I want to compensate with a bonus went above and beyond the call of duty and outside their scope of work. The first weeks and months of the pandemic were extremely stressful times with so many unknowns and so many new challenges to operate and run Fairfield's town government. This small group of individuals helped me to plan literally every aspect of how our town would change operations, from online permits, drop boxes, mail stations, beaches, parks, to events, camps, sports, and all government services. And this list is really honestly just a small sample of the planning required during a state of emergency. Without the dedication and extraordinary, extraordinary level of commitment to coordinate, plan, execute, and respond to the COVID-19 crisis from the following employees, the residents of Fairfield would not have experienced the level of town services and communication that we were able to provide. This is not to diminish those hours again of our police, fire, DPW, health, and other departments, and the many volunteers who contributed to our town's success, but again, that these individuals do not, did not receive any compensation for their overtime, and believe me, it was significant. So as I had outlined at the backup to you, Sands Clary, I am proposing a $5,000 bonus to, obviously, it's, I don't know that we have to say it, but I'm going to for the record. He, you know, he just provided calm, steadfast leadership at the very outset of the pandemic, always thinking two steps ahead, and under his leadership, the Health Department provided information to help keep our residents informed throughout the day-to-day changes that occurred. He participated in countless press conferences with me, reviewed material for my newsletters to ensure accuracy, and at the, probably the first four months, I mean, we were sending out three and four newsletters a week with information because things were changing so dramatically, and we wanted to make sure that our community was up to date and they knew everything that we knew. We, he also established a robust contact tracing operation, personally responded to thousands of emails, and I mean thousands of emails, phone calls at all hours of the night and on weekends. He set up one of the first vaccine clinics in the state. Sands also oversaw and worked all the clinics which provided vaccinations on nights and weekends to over 25,000 people. Sands worked with the State Department of Education, the CDC, and he aggregated information and disseminated it into the town in a way that was easy to understand. He advised the Board of Education, local businesses, universities, town residents, and town employees on the best protocols following the sector rules, which seemed to change weekly at some points. So I just, you know, obviously, there was a tremendous amount that Sands did, and, and I feel actually that this is a really less than he should, should get, but I did do it. And so Dennis McCarthy, who also the emergency management director and fire chief, was invaluable to me, and the emergency management team worked tirelessly, just incredible amounts of hours, weekends, nights, making sure that everything was running exactly the way it should, keeping the team together. I, I could go on and on and on. Dave Kelly, we all know, ran all of our online meetings. Dave literally was running online meetings every single night, set up all the laptops for people to work remotely from town hall. He dealt with an awful lot, way more than I think he ever thought in his life he would be doing. But without his assistance, we wouldn't have been able to continue our town government and our town meetings, simply would have been a real challenge. Anthony Calibres, who was an integral part of our emergency management team, and frankly, his department was kind of like the front of this, you know, the camps, the beaches, the parks, you know, when we remember, you know, Jackie and I were going through all this stuff, and we were putting that backup together for you guys. You know, you forget, you know, because it was like a blur, because it was constant and it was every day, but I mean, just when I shut down every public space in our town early on and to keep, you know, to manage that, to make sure people were not coming into these spaces, and when we shut down our beaches and our Lake Mohegan to residents only, that required a huge level of commitment from Anthony and from others, but Anthony, I have to say, he was just, he was really incredible. I mean, he was at our beaches literally every single weekend, making sure everything was running appropriately, and our residents felt safe when they were in our public spaces when we did reopen, which was a huge task. He coordinated with our planning team, he was an integral part of the planning operations for so many different things, and always on top of it and answering literally, again, just like others, thousands of emails and questions from our residents. And I also have included my Chief of Staff, Jackie Bertolone, who was basically the glue of the emergency management team, making sure all of us were on task, following up with all the follow-up to the team, so everybody knew what they were doing and making sure everybody was following up. I mean, Jackie helped me, obviously, with the communications to our community. You know, after, early, especially the first few months when most of our employees were working from home, it was me and Jackie here, managing the phones, answering our residents' emails and phone calls, and managing all of it, the press conferences, the newsletters, the disseminating information to our community. And, and I think our community really appreciated that level of communication because frankly, they were, they were scared, and it was a scary time for everyone. And you have the backup, and the other two are Jim Hazelcamp, who had to deal with, you know, HR issues that arose during the pandemic were very new, it created complex issues for our town. He had to administer a complex series of federal laws passed to deal with the family-first coronavirus response and numerous things that came up during the pandemic. So it was, it was quite, he helped me when we laid off our 400-plus part-time employees because obviously, nothing was open, and helped us navigate that, which actually ended up helping us save a significant amount of money for our town. And Mr. Bremer, our C, my CAO, the town CAO, you know, the majority of my time was focused solely on the pandemic, and it was just nonstop, and he helped make sure he was attending the meetings, keeping abreast with all the fill pile and all the other issues that are important, that need to be constantly monitored, even though the state departments that were working with us weren't operating at full capacity, we were still on top of our game with our items, and nothing fell through the hoops, except we had delays simply because those state and federal agencies had reduced capacities. So he was really invaluable during this time, and I'm grateful, very grateful for their help and that our town was able to get through this. And so I think that's really all I have to say about it. I do want to, again, I know this is an unprecedented situation, but I frankly feel that this is just a small, really a small compensation for these individuals who really stepped up and worked hundreds and hundreds of hours of overtime and, and helped keep our town together during a unprecedented crisis. And I just want to note that I know that Westport also gave out COVID-related bonuses to members, some members of their emergency management team as well. So I'm just going to open it up for comments or questions. Thank you.
So First Select, I'm sorry, Nancy, did I cut you off?
Okay, I had a question about timing of this, if you could just explain why now and as opposed to through the budget process we went through, I understand what the bonuses, but with the salary increases, and I know we discussed this somewhat, but if we could just share that publicly?
So, um, okay, so as for the salaries, you know, we look back at the history of this, and it's been done both ways, and I guess in the past, sometimes it was done early and included in the budget, and then it was done this way after, and I looked at both ways, and my thought was, if you put a, if you put salary increases in a budget that's basically established in January, right, and then going through the process and starts publicly being reviewed in late February and then in March, you're basically giving a raise to people so many months before it actually goes into effect. So you're really not judging the person on their whole, on merit, like, that's many months before, right? So you're giving them a raise before July, back in, you know, the, in February, and I think, I personally think that this should be the way it should be so that you actually can watch someone's performance. Obviously, this is a different year because of COVID, but you want to see how someone is delivering their, their work product throughout the whole year before you evaluate them and then put in for a bonus, so.
And then this is part of the contingency? Yeah, if you could just explain that, too.
Right.
And again, I know we discussed this, I just.
Right, so there's a contingency that we asked for, and that's what it's been done in the past, you know, we looked at, like I said, past practice, and the former administration did it both ways, where they put the, you put the contingency up like we did this year, this budget, and then you draw from that for the raises. In the past, it's also been done where they put it actually in the budget. But again, there's also, I want to note this as well, it was brought to my attention, I think it was Selectman Flynn who brought this to my attention when we talked about the different ways it's been done. So you're basically like saying to everybody, oh, I gave Nancy a 5% raise, she's great, but Tom, he only gets two. So people would be like, oh, you know, like, it's, it's kind of a personnel issue, like right there, and maybe not completely appropriate.
Yep.
In terms of putting it on the, on the table at the Board, at the budget level, at the Board of Selectmen level, I understand that.
In the budget, right, in the budget process.
Is it, right, 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 no, I understand. And I guess I would just say, I just want to reiterate that, you know, at this point, and I had said this when we talked through the budget process, and I wished, wished you well, I didn't agree with it, you know, I didn't support it, but at the same time, we're now in it, and I want, you know, I think you have been elected to, to make these decisions, and, and that is what I'm supportive of, and of course, as I said, it's, some of it, as you alluded to, there's no price tag you can put on, on thanking some of the staff that, that work so tirelessly and just want to echo that thanks, and, you know, it's in some ways the very least that we could do. So as I said, I, I, I want to be able to make that statement as well, and so for those reasons, I am supportive, so I don't have anything further to say.
Thank you, Nancy.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. A couple of things, number one on the salaries, I applaud the way that you handled it. I think giving more time to really understand how the people performed is appropriate. I think keeping it away from the budget process so the budget process doesn't get derailed and into a discussion of how town bodies believe one person performed in their salary is also appropriate. It is also consistent with what was done the last previous years, so I think that's right. I also want to thank the department heads who did yeoman's effort in the past year and had not gotten a salary increase, as we talked about, and foregoed their salary increase for a year. I think that should be recognized, so that's where I stand on the salary issues related to this, and I'm glad it was foresaw within the calculation of the contingency as well, and congratulate the town bodies on, on that effort on that. As it relates to the one-time bonuses, number one, I want to recognize the, the efforts of all of our union employees during COVID, and the work and effort, and say that that does not go unnoticed and is obviously covered by their individual contracts that have been negotiated with the town, so that that's why they were excluded from this, and I think that's appropriate, given, given the contracts and that, and I want to thank them for their efforts. I mean, look, at the end of the day, this was a public health crisis of epic proportion, and we have seen, in fact, my daughter's company, she was deemed an essential employee, and the entire company was granted bonuses last week for their efforts during, during this COVID cycle, so this is not quote-unquote unprecedented. I also think that the use of the COVID relief funds here for this effort means that this is budgetary neutral for the taxpayers of the town, which is a good thing. And it's not that I disagree with the First Selectwoman, she, she's commented several times here today at the untold number of hours and the effort that was put in, and I appreciate that, but I really want to highlight, it wasn't so much the effort, why I think these bonuses are deserved, because I know tons of people in the private world that put in 60, 70, 80 hours a week, untold people, trying to keep their businesses afloat. It's not the effort that I'm, I'm willing to support this because of, it's the results, and I think that the town came through it quite well. You highlighted what Mr. Clary did, you highlighted what other members of the administration did, and it was truly not the number of hours that we worked, but it was the way they managed the crisis for the, for the taxpayers and for the citizens of the town, and how they were kept as safe as possible, and how were other governmental agencies, and Madam First Selectwoman, you meant, you mentioned it, were not running at full capacity. We were able to do that for Fairfield and able to keep essential services open, and I also do, and I would be remiss in not recognizing your personal efforts on, on doing the same. So I want to thank you for that, and, and for your leadership during that time. So because of those reasons, quite frankly, this was easy to support for me. I, I think I never mind paying for results, and I think that's what we're paying for.
Thank you. That's a good point. You know, I'm really proud of, you know, you're right, Tom, I mean, the results, you know, it's in the results, right? Proof is in the pudding, and I am just incredibly proud of these people and, and to work with them, and it's been a real honor, and I appreciate you mentioning our union members, not just of the emergency management team, but of all of our departments, they really stepped up and had to do things, and, you know, I know other towns didn't really, you know, they, a lot of people worked from home, they did things, they closed their town halls, and I'm just so incredibly proud of everybody, all of them, the DPW, the fire, the police, all our town employees who stepped up, you know, 48 hours, this building was shut down, that's it, to, to plan, and, and they literally just rose the challenge in every single aspect. And I mean, really, I, I'm just incredibly grateful for every single one of them. All right, well, there's, I almost get, almost like a little teary-eyed thinking about all the hard work and the camaraderie and teamwork of our, of our, of our people. It's, it's something that we should all be really proud of. All right, if there's no other discussion on this item, I don't even know if I, did I do a motion?
We, I think we did.
Okay.
I think we did.
All right, so.
I think so, too.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys. Our next item is item number six, to hear, to consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of $231,206.77. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved for discussion purposes.
And I will second it.
All in favor? I mean, open up for discussion, sorry.
Thank you. This is an extraordinarily high amount for this, for this period. What's going on here? Because this was typically, we get, you know, 20, 30, 10, 5, something like this, this is a quarter of a million dollars. What's, what's happened here? Do we know?
I, I don't know, I didn't ask. I mean, I could speculate and think we had a lot of home sales, and sometimes, you know, there's accrued interest in, you know, when people pay through their mortgage companies, and we had a high volume of sale, or land, but I don't know, and I don't have the tax collector on the line.
Yeah, there's one here that's for like $95,000, I think, or $93,000, is, is this CFO still on the, on the line?
Yes.
My apologies, I didn't, I didn't flag this earlier, so my apologies, but I saw the amount, and it's just, it's a really high amount.
Jared, are you checking with Dave?
Yes, we're trying to get ahold of him right now.
Okay, so how about if I go?
And my apologies, there was no, there was no heads up from me on this, so this is on me, but I just looked at it and the amount just blew me away.
Yeah, no, it's, it's also, you're raising a good point and question, and I think we should be discussing it publicly anyway, so I think it's not bad to have it personally.
Thanks, Nancy. Was, hey, just, Nancy was breaking up a little bit there, was that just my connection or is there something with?
I, I don't know, it happens sometimes. I could go into some of my announcements if that, and then we, when he comes, that's okay with you guys?
Totally.
Okay, so I just want to let you know that the July's Tree of Hope at Sherman Green is writ for the Pan Mass Challenge benefiting the Dana Farber and the Jimmy Fund, and that is being lit for the month of July, and, let's see, okay, so it's actually going to be, oh yes, in, in. oh, yes, and, and their event is usually held the first weekend in August. So each summer, thousands of riders and volunteers from 43 states and 12 countries participate in the PMC, all with a common goal to find a cure for cancer. So Fairfield's Team Brent has raised over 5.7 million toward PMC. And 100% of the all-riders raised funds go directly to cancer research. So if you have a chance, you'll know, when you go by the green, you'll know what it's lit for this month. I do want to announce that today I terminated our civil prevarities emergency declaration for our town, which I had signed on March 16th of 2020. I did so in accordance with the Connecticut general statutes. And so, and was signed and sealed by the town clerk. So we are officially not in a declaration of emergency in the town of Fairfield. I have to tell you, when I was told I had to sign that and, and everything that happened from that day forward was an experience I will not soon forget. So I am very glad that I, that we no longer are a state of emergency. I want to also announce the gradual reopening of the Bigelow Center. I was there today for a barbecue. They had like a reopening barbecue for seniors and it was, it was amazing. They had so many seniors showed up and, and they had a hook out for everybody. And there was smiles all the way around. Everyone was so happy to be back together again. They were enjoying each other's company, laughing and eating and just, it was really awesome. So it was a good thing to see. And they will, if you go to their website, not just for the public certification or for seniors who might be listening, you can go to the senior center website. They are going to be gradually reopening with classes and such, just to make sure for safety. Obviously, our seniors are our most vulnerable population. So we do want to make sure that they're safe. And so just for the record, it's www.fairfieldct.org backslash, backslash Bigelow Center. And that's how you can get information about when the hours are, what, what's the capacity of classes and things of that nature. But just at this time, the senior center is still going to be closed for lunch, as recommended by the state guidelines. And congregant meal sites, they have recommended not be open at this time. Attend the Lunch on the Lawn every Friday this summer, which is nice. So maybe you guys, if you have a chance, could do Lunch on the Lawn on Fridays, which I, I, I recommend you do because it was fun.
So Brenda, as, at this senior center event, did you go as first select woman or as a senior?
Well, that's very funny, Mr. Flynn. No, Mr. Flynn, I went as the first select woman.
Got it.
And I don't think we should be talking about the fact that I can join the senior center.
It was just there, it was a layup, I'm saying.
Yeah, that was great.
Kinds of HR stewards with that question.
This is just an obvious one.
I want to note that our fireworks went off without a hitch. And I received extraordinarily positive feedback that are from our community saying it was handled well, the fireworks were beautiful. And I do want to say that our, our planning team, fire, police, parks and rec really stepped up. We were expecting pretty much all of Fairfield County to show up because really none of the other towns of Fairfield County were doing fireworks. So we were, I, I want to say we were overprepared to handle massive amounts of people. And everything went off without a hitch. Everything was well done and our community was really, really happy. And I think it was a great sort of celebration after, after a global pandemic. So big fun for everybody. And I, I just want to thank all of those who were involved in planning it. And how are we doing, Jared? Do you have any Dave Kulakowski? Kulvisky?
Yes, so on the, on the cover sheet, there was a typo to the, the Mill Hill Terrace, 1343 Mill Hill Terrace, was, it's listed as 93,704.24. And it, the actual amount is 9,000, Jackie, 9,337.
So is the total amount different? The 231,206.77?
Right, so that, that difference is going to bring it down.
Should, should we make the motion to amend?
I haven't done the actual math yet.
What's the number, Jared?
Hang on one second.
Why don't we, given this item, what I would like to do is hold this over to the next meeting and approve it at the next meeting, just to make sure that all the numbers are gone over before we approve it, if you don't mind.
All right, so I can give you the new total.
What is it?
Say it again.
Yeah, can we, can we, I, I'd make a motion that we, thank you, Jared, number one, for looking into it on the fly. Number two, I'd like to make a motion that we hold this item over for the next meeting with the request that the numbers be confirmed throughout the schedule and then just re-presented to us as, as part of our next meeting.
We, we have the motion on the table as listed, so I think we have to vote that down on a technicality.
Do we? I had that, you could be right. I don't want to, whichever.
We just made the motion, so if we want to, I don't know if we want to approve it. I can find either way.
Yeah, maybe you want to ask the town attorney so that we do this right, if, if Mr. Baldwin's on, but.
He's actually.
Oh, he's on vacation, isn't he?
No, no, he's in my next room conference, but he's on a conference call in there.
Got it. I, I just want to do this right. I mean, we can vote it down and then I'll make the motion if that, if Nancy, if you're fine with that. You know, if you're fine with voting it down. If you guys want to vote, go for it and I won't vote for it. I'm good with that, too.
I think we can, can we withdraw? You haven't done this before. Can we withdraw the motion?
I, I believe we can.
That, I just, we just have an open.
Yeah, so why don't you?
So why don't we, why don't you withdraw the motion and he'll withdraw his second, Nancy?
Okay, withdrawn.
Okay. Tom?
You seconded. So fine, let's take no action and let's do it at the next meeting.
Okay, so we'll postpone to the Board of Selectmen's, Board of Selectmen's next meeting.
Yeah, and if they could go through the numbers and just confirm them.
Yeah, I think it was just a typo.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, so we are going, I believe, into executive session. So let's vote.
I'll make the motion to go into executive session.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Dave Kelly, you're gonna. And then I'll text Dave after we get out.
This session is no longer being recorded.
And Dave, you have to.
Muted.
Dave?
Okay. Yep.
So it should just be Tom, Attorney Zabel. Get a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion. There was no votes taken during executive session and I need a motion to approve the settlement as recommended.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, thank you, Attorney Zabel.
Okay, thank you, folks.
Uh, so, yes, thank you. Thank you. So we, I got a message from Dave, our tax collector, and he sent you guys some backup on the refund. Apparently it was just a simple typo. Excuse me, on the tax. And it's going to be very difficult for these residents who overpaid, if they don't get their money back, to wait till the next Board of Selectmen meeting. So Nancy, if you look at your email, Jackie sent.
All right, I'm going to go off video because then I can look at the same time.
Yep, and.
You know, Tom, I understand what you're saying, but in light of all, if it really is a simple typo and they've double checked, I did look, I mean, I'm, I'm very glad you obviously brought that up. But I'm, you know, happy to.
Explain to me the process by which this hit our desk with the error in it.
Uh, Dave is calling in, Tom.
Yeah, I know.
Apparently, his secretary does this, you know, manual spreadsheet and it was just a simple typo.
I don't, I, yeah, I don't understand, and this isn't against you. I don't understand the terminology, manual spreadsheet. Right? It's, she put together.
I literally did it. We had a modernized town hall, right? I told you.
But I mean, isn't it literally someone entered a number and it was an extra? Okay, I mean, it happens. It's an error.
How, how does it reach?
They typed the numbers into the spreadsheet.
Right?
So let's wait till, let's wait till Dave.
Right, that's what I want.
So I, I want to ask this, because I just asked Attorney Baldwin. We can make a motion to rescind our motion to move the meeting, move this item to the next Board of Selectmen meeting.
We never, we didn't do that.
And then we can make a motion to hear this item and allow Dave then to talk about it and present it.
So we didn't make that motion to move it? What we did was we just passed over the item. You, you withdrew the item, so it was withdrawn. We didn't make the motion to move it to the next.
No, we withdrew the item, but then we made, didn't we make a motion to move it to the next Board of Selectmen?
We didn't, we just, no action taken, that's all.
No action taken.
Okay. All right, so then we can put it back. Okay, so let's just see where.
Well, the item is still on the agenda technically. We just didn't take an action on it. So we can decide to take an action or, you know, not.
Is Dave? Where's Dave?
We're waiting for him to call in.
All right, we have Dave Kay here live in person in the conference room.
Oh, thanks, Dave. I appreciate it. Okay, so do you want to, I know you sent these backups to us on an email. Would you like to just explain it to us?
Sure. Um, so I did verify every single account. And they all match up dollar for dollar, other than the very first one. It was just a simple typing error and that an extra three was added by mistake. Now, just to kind of give an overview of how the reconciliation works, this is just a manual cover sheet. The origin of the refund, by law, the taxpayers do have to sign off. They have to actually apply for the refund. And that application is generated by our software database. We don't have the ability to manipulate those numbers. The numbers are generated based on, if an overpayment occurs, then that exact dollar amount is what goes on the application. So then what is given to finance when it comes to sending the checks is they have the stack of refunds that are signed off by the taxpayers. And they go by those amounts on the applications, not by the amounts on the cover sheet.
So how often, Dave, do we have problems with this cover sheet?
I'm sorry?
How often does this error, have you found errors on the cover sheets?
This is the first time in the time I've been here.
Okay, so you went back between when we just kicked this back to you a half hour ago and now, and you verified all the other numbers?
Correct. I, I did go line by line and looked at every signed application. And the rest of them did match up dollar for dollar.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And if, if it ever happened in the, in the past, the finance would have picked it up and they have not.
Yeah, this was just a sizable amount. And as a former auditor, it raises the hair on the back of my neck to say what's going on in the process, right? Because we're, we're actually approving, I mean, what would we do if we had actually paid the amount out? Right? I mean, we approved the payment, we would have approved the payment of that amount. That's all.
Understood.
Well, I think we would approve the total amount, but at the end of the day, it would have, I think, maybe just go back because you would have never actually given.
But I don't know what our recourse would have been if we actually did, Bren. I don't know whether, you know, I, I don't know what the control is there. I get it that the finance department goes off after the applications and not the schedule. But hanging out there is this approval by our board to actually pay this taxpayer back a significantly more amount of money had we gone forward. It just, when I see things like this.
I was going to say, you know, I am happy to make a motion to re, to approve, given all of this. I don't know, Tom, if you still feel you need to delay, but.
Nope, I'm fine. Thank you, David, for going back and doing it.
Yeah, thank you. So just, I move as amended to reflect the new amount.
And Dave, just to be clear, it's 147,169.77?
Correct.
Okay. So you, you made a motion for that amount?
Yep.
Okay. Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Dave, for coming back.
No problem.
All right, so I think we, and we did all our updates and everything. So can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, aye, thanks, guys. Have, have a good night.
Have a good night, thanks.
Take care.
Bye.